I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha. This is the full Board of Education meeting on August 11th, 2021. To get started, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Deeds.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Joseph Como.
Here. Sue, Karen is excused. And so will you also please verify that we've been properly posted?
Yes, we have.
Thank you for doing so. We do have one recognition this evening that we're going to start with. Assistant Superintendent Thiede, will you please introduce someone very special?
Turn it up a little bit, I'm sorry. Can't hear very well.
Oh, so people can't hear me? Is this better? Is this better? Okay. I'll speak as loud as I can here. Usually I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, good evening. This evening, I'm pleased to announce Susan Poppy, who is right back over there. So she was approved last month as the principal of East Alternative High School, so I wanted to introduce her here this evening. She's a passionate educator and leader that is driven by serving all students. Her experience with at-risk youth, in addition to her extensive experience in special education, is an asset as she begins her work with both our students at the alternative school and the Transition Academy already. She values collaboration and practices active listening as she navigates conflict. Ms. Poppy believes in establishing a safe and welcoming culture within a culture of learning to assist students who struggle in a traditional learning environment. So please join me in welcoming Ms. Susan Poppy.
Moving on, we do not have a report from our student representatives tonight, but we, I think we'll begin those next month. And we will move on to the portion of our meeting where our citizens have the opportunity to address the Board of Education. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes, but today, normally we give three minutes. Since we have 32 speakers, and we like to try and keep the discussion to 30 minutes, I'm going to expand that to an hour. So with 32, and a little bit beyond an hour, so with 32 speakers, we'll give everyone two minutes each. So if you've come prepared for three minutes and you've been here in the past, hopefully you can adjust down to the two minutes, and we'd appreciate that. So at the two-minute mark, or at the one-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will give you an indication to wrap things up in the next 30 seconds for a total of two minutes. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your phones at this time if you haven't done so already. And like I said, we do have 32 people tonight. First up is Ronaldo Bermudez, followed by Carly...
Carol.
Carol, I'm sorry. Carol Sedushok. And sorry if I mispronounce your name. I'm going to ask that you reintroduce yourself when you address the podium anyways, so I apologize if I mispronounce people's names. Ronaldo, please start out. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Ronaldo Bermudez. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. I am coming today to address the concern that has been risen amongst the community about reinstituting masks at the Waukesha School District level. As a family of four, we have three children currently in the Waukesha School District, and I am standing against the mask mandates. There are people who believe that the data and science should be, what should be used to kind of, you know, go off the guidelines on how we should implement that or not. Well, I bring to the question, what is that data and what is the actual science that we use to establish that, the founding? The CDC is constantly changing what it says on the efficacy of masks and things of that nature. I can show a link to the CDC site where it shows that the efficacy of masks preventing the influenza virus is just not there. It just doesn't happen. The influenza virus just sneaks completely past the mask, and actually, the nanometers of which the viruses are measured, coronaviruses are actually much smaller in comparison. You have 50 to 144-millimeter, or nanometers for coronavirus disease, and then 80 to 120 for the influenza. So the idea that masks should be used on children, the evidence just doesn't stand there. There's also another standpoint where I don't believe that we, as American citizens, we all basically, at some point of time, exercise our faith, whatever it may be, whatever religion you follow, whatever faith that you follow, we have the right to exercise it. I've exercised my minds in this room 10 times already, and none of you knew about it because I didn't force it upon you. I'm coming with a stance that I've never heard before. I've heard all kinds of statistical data and all kinds of presentations from doctors and teachers and lawyers all across the nations on YouTube and Facebook...
30 seconds.
...of what they call, of presentations about why we should or shouldn't mask children and do vaccinations. Well, I'm going to come with a different stance. I believe that since we can't come up with statistical data that actually stands and doesn't change by the minute, just like faith is faith and religion is religion, because it is no statistical data to be replicated and not constituted, and it should not be taught or forced on our children, then I would label coronavirus and COVID and its protocols as a religion. And I don't believe religion belongs in schools or being forced upon the children who attend those public schools, just like Christianity can't be forced on children, neither can Islam.
Time.
Neither should COVID or its viruses or protocols.
Thank you, Ronaldo. Carol? And sorry, Carol, about mispronouncing your name. Followed by Lori Schwabey.
Good evening, School Board members. Masks are not protecting our children from COVID and Delta. The particles pass right through these masks. This is a proven fact. Children have difficulties breathing and having frustration at not being understood. They're inhaling their carbon dioxide rather than letting it out of their bodies. This is affecting their lungs. Children learn by reading facial expressions. How can they read a teacher's face or lips? These masks are affecting their self-worth, self-esteem, and their learning. This is dumbing down our children's education. Most of the current scientific education has been removed by social media and the internet sites. Have you read the correct scientific studies? Are you more interested about the political influences or the health of our children? Please vote no.
Thank you, Carol. Lori, followed by Kristen Bowman.
I am so grateful for the board we have now. They believe we, as parents, actually know what is best for our kids. And May, this board voted no to mask. Information shared that night showed how masks did not prevent the spread of coronavirus, but actually did more harm to the kid's respiratory system as well as mental health. That has not changed. I come tonight, though, to speak on behalf of the teachers, who can't come forth because they're part of a teachers' union that are bullies. These teachers do not want to wear masks. These teachers don't want their students to wear masks. There is a small percentage of teachers that are very boisterous and have the backing of the teachers' union. They continue to dictate what my child can and cannot do. I stand before you now because I ask this board, let me parent. I have four kids, I think I'm doing pretty well. And let the teachers do their job. I cannot believe we're talking about masks again. Could we please talk about curriculum? The board passed no mask. Let's be done. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. Teachers signed a contract knowing what we had stated in May. Masks are optional. The teachers are causing division in our schools, the teachers that are pushing for this. They had 18 months to evaluate their career options. My kid does not need to wear a mask. My kid had Corona. She has natural immunities. She has two years left of high school. Her first two years, I don't even know what it was.
30 seconds.
I would like you to think about giving her her final two years. Today, I sent off my son to college, in which you allowed, thank you very much, the ability to have the last four weeks of school. And I cannot, my heart just wants to hug you for those last four weeks he had normal. And I thank you for that. Please give my daughter that same opportunity.
Thank you, Lori. Christine, followed by Brad Farnworth.
Hey, everybody. First, I want to say a shout-out to all the teachers in the room, if you're there. Thank you so much for all you do for us and our school district. I want to thank the administrators. I want to thank the janitors. I want to thank the computer guy back here, wherever he went. I want to thank the food service people. If I miss anybody, I apologize. Thank you. It's been a tumultuous year. I'm here tonight to say thank you for making masks optional. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't wear it. The real reason why I came, though, is not only to thank you, but to also talk about books. Did you know in your library, available to 11-year-olds, is a book? And there's nothing wrong with this book, because I'm a medical person, kids are normally curious about sex. And we want them to have books, we want them to read. The book is called Queer: The Ultimate LGBT Guide for Teens. If that's your thing, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with it. Here's the issue I have. I'm asking for consistent policy. As a board, or as a school district, we notify parents when kids engage in the formal sexual education that we get in the school. Can we notify them of books? Is this book appropriate for an 11-year-old? I can read you excerpts. I've learned a few things, and I'm a medical person, okay? Here's what's in here. It talks about masturbation. That's a normal, that's a normal thing of development. But shouldn't we be notifying parents of 11-year-old kids that they're checking these books out? I'm not talking about censorship, I'm talking about parental notification. And I think as a board, I'm asking you to be consistent in your policies. So in cases like this, when you have a book, you know, it's talking about being de-virginized for straight kids, he sticks his penis in her vagina, and voila, they're both de-virginated. I've never heard the word "de-virginated," but that's okay. But for queers, it can be a little more complicated. Yes, it can.
Time.
We know it can.
Thank you, Christine.
And one other thing, can we do something about the time?
Thank you, Christine. Please respect, please respect the time.
I will. But I'm just saying, I don't think you should be cutting everybody off at two.
Please respect the time.
I am.
That's one way that we're fair with everyone, because if I give one person three minutes and someone went before, it just doesn't work well. Brad, followed by Ellie McHenry.
Hello, School Board members, and President Como. Let's rewind to last year. The blood of children dying will be on your hands. This obviously didn't occur. From now on, five-day face-to-face, to quarantines, to masks, the fear mongers have been on the wrong side every single thing. Just as important a topic as the current academic issues currently being ran throughout the country, such as CRT, as well as books found in our school libraries...
Please remove the poster. Put the poster down, Paul.
Please direct your attention to a few photos taken from a book called It's Perfectly Normal, founded at Horning Middle School. Do you think this is appropriate? Perhaps I should show up the first day of school and hand out a flyer with these pictures, and where they can find this book, and hand it out to every 11- to 13-year-old child entering the building. Would this be appropriate? We'll just ignore the fact I would probably be arrested on some kind of pornography charge. One could make the argument that these are cartoon drawings, which make it okay. So if the middle school student was drawing these on his folder at school, would he go without consequence? If your answer is anything but no, you're lying to yourself. I sent all of you an email asking you to think about the word accountability and what it means to you. I don't expect you, as a board, to know about items such as these. However, someone put these into circulation, and someone needs to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Followed by Ellie and Colleen Benfield. Hi, Ellie.
I am not here speaking for myself. I am speaking for a friend who is unable to come but would like to be heard. She's a single parent with children who attend Waukesha schools. These words are her words and her story. I recently sent an email to the board requesting that you reconsider universal masking per CDC, DHS, AAP, and now local hospitals' recommendations. I have heard back from two board members. One who stated that he does not and will not support a return to any guidance from the agencies or bodies that have contradicted and discredited themselves, and the other who stated that she will make an informed decision and consider, but not necessarily follow, the guidance from these entities. Administration has stated that under the new guidelines, close contacts who have symptoms but no fever will not be required to quarantine or wear a mask in class. So as I sit here sobbing at my desk while I contemplate the best course of action for my family, I ask you to consider what choices these guidelines offer to the single parents and the lower-income families. As I contemplate pulling my son from 4K because zero precautions are being taken, and I'm basically asked to rely on my four-year-old to protect himself, I'm finding that in-home childcares are far and few between, and most are completely booked. My summer sitter has called in sick once again, so I'm currently juggling these issues, work deadlines, and my four-year-old who wants my constant attention. I have no family in the area to provide support. A nanny costs a minimum $10 an hour, but averages at $15 to $20. This is not affordable to single parents and lower-income families. We are extremely limited on choices. And the idea of our families getting sick because our schools and school board refuse to take even the most basic precautions could straddle us with additional expense due to doctor's visits and hospital stays. Many of our lower-income families do not even have health insurance. So when you are making your decision, I hope that you are considering all of these factors as well.
Time.
Some parents are simply uncomfortable with their children wearing masks...
Thank you, Ellie.
...while others need it.
Welcome, Colleen. And Colleen will be followed by Rebecca Flaherty.
My name is Colleen Benfield. My address is South 53 West 23733 Big Bend Road. I teach first grade at Hadfield and Lumentary, and I have three children who will be attending SDW this fall. My daughter Charlie is 11 and will be a sixth grader at Horning. She's the quintessential pre-teen tomboy. She plays cello, softball, volleyball, and lives to snowboard with her dad. She likes to read graphic novels and watch anime. And if she could take up permanent residence at Buckner Pool this summer, she would. My son Jude is nine and will be a fourth grader at Prairie. Jude has a mind for facts. He can tell you every country across the globe and what landmarks or historical events make them significant. He likes video games, especially Minecraft. He reads books about weird and wild facts, cover to cover, and then reads them again. He hates strong thunderstorms, especially tornadoes, so you can imagine what the last few weeks have been like in our house. My youngest son Case is four and will be in 4K at Prairie. Case is our outgoing wild guy. Case likes Legos, drawing, and playing pretend. He talks from the moment he wakes up to the moment he falls asleep. Just ask his brother, who shares a room with him. When we go to the playground, Case makes friends with anyone and everyone. He's absolutely ecstatic to be going to school this fall and asks every day, how many days until school? What does this have to do with a school board meeting? Simple. These three are mine and my husband's entire world. They will be in classrooms with 20-plus other children who are also the center of someone else's world. They all have names, faces, likes, dislikes...
30 seconds.
...and deserve to be in school face-to-face in the safest environment possible. My children are too young to be vaccinated and are easily susceptible to this virus. We know masks work. We successfully made it through the entire school year last year at the elementary level because of masking. Why mess with what we know works? Please do the right thing and mask our children until they are old enough to be vaccinated.
Thank you, Colleen. Up next is Rebecca, followed by Stacy Keane.
Hi.
Hi, Rebecca.
Hi, hi. I'm Rebecca Flaherty. I first want to thank you all for making masks optional in May. My senior got to go to prom without a mask, got to graduate. And I ask that you continue to let us make medical decisions about masking and vaccines for our children. So I'm not here tonight to talk about masks, though. I'm here to talk about curriculum, policy, and transparency. In the spring, I brought you evidence of CRT being taught in our classrooms. Since then, I fully appreciate how seriously you're taking this matter. I've listened to every meeting since, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart that you're taking this seriously. The new anti-racist obsession is incredibly exclusionary and hurtful to people of all color. If you want to get rid of racism and ensure our children do not see color, then create policy to stop talking about it in classrooms. True equality will be achieved by maximizing the ability of all students to become self-sufficient, not by dividing them on the basis of color. Nobody, not you, not teachers, nor students, should enter our school buildings with the fear of being branded a racist or told that they are biased. Please ensure instructional content creates a shared sense of national identity, teaching that America belongs to all Americans, and that this nation and its progress are worth celebrating. Your goal should be to unite our children, not to divide. After you set policy, how do you unite and enforce it? You really can't. You need to let parents help you. We are here to help you. Ensure all teachers provide full transparency of everything being taught to our children. Every teacher, every class should digitally publish detailed lesson plans, assignments, vocabulary lists, links to all videos, and lists of all books available in the classroom. Keep it up to date, make it available without us having to use our children's Google IDs. Let's work together to unite our families and our children by imparting the foundational principles of this country: intrinsic equity of all humans, equal protection under the law, liberty, self-reliance, and hard work. Every day, in every classroom, let's celebrate our fundamental American values.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Rebecca. Stacy, followed by Kurt Burry. Welcome, Stacy.
Hi, I'm Stacy Keane. For kids in the room, this will be graphic, if you want to remove them. First, I want to say thank you to the board for your decision in May and for confirming that you intend to keep masks and vaccines optional. Last week, I spoke, and I failed to be clear on what I was really trying to say. I don't want to ban books. However, I do think there are books in our school libraries which should require parental consent. I remember when my oldest was in sixth grade at Les Paul, I had to sign a permission slip for her to see The Giver, a PG-13 movie. However, an 11-year-old can walk into, or get on their iPad, or even walk into a library, check out a book called Later Gator. Imagine your 11-year-old child or grandchild reading this. I like to put on a show, so not only do you have to be hung, talented, long-lasting, multiple-comer, but you have to be okay effing a sexy 18-year-old friend.
Do you, do you think you have to? People don't have a choice.
This is in our schools. Our kids are reading this, and you're going to tell me I can't read it to you because it's inappropriate?
It's being broadcast on the internet.
Everybody, settle down, please.
But that just means more of it to go around.
Oh, down.
The first guy asked her to pass on a message about his big cock. Isn't that charming?
Okay.
I'm kind of weirded out.
Stacy, the difference, Stacy, is people...
Just give a second to have the kids go. Like, that's all. It's okay to talk about this, but if we can...
Thank you.
The kids, they're reading the book already.
Okay.
No, 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 just, I just...
Everyone, please...
I want my time stopped right now.
Please, please calm down. Please, everyone, please. I'm asking to please calm down.
Thank you.
This, I understand the passion behind it. This is a difficult topic. I understand you're trying to make your point, Stacy. And I would just appreciate it if you could think through what you're saying here.
I am.
And I, I understand that these are excerpts from books within, I get it.
No, you don't. Shh, everybody.
Okay. So, ma'am, do you want...
It's not enough to enforce a rule not for people to swear?
So, please, please...
I asked, can I say something? I asked parents who had kids in here, and I told them what I was going to do. Everyone I talked to said, okay, we will handle it.
Okay. Do you know where we're at?
I also gave a warning.
Do you know where we're at with time?
There was 47 seconds.
Okay. Stacy, 47.
Do you like to take her out?
Stacy, 4...
Yeah, she was more upset about the yelling back and forth. Obviously, it's not the words. It's the yelling back and forth.
Forty, if you can wrap up in 47 seconds, Stacy, I'd appreciate it.
She says she's okay.
I'm kind of wired. I just gave Doug his first blowjob. It was going away, it was his going-away present. It wasn't all that fun for me, but I think he really liked it. But my jaw got really tired. But I was like, this is Doug, and I love him. Did you spit or swallow? I swallowed, but I don't think it's, I'm going to do that next time. Doug tried to go down on me. Jeez, that sounds dorky. But I was like, no, 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 that's okay. And it goes on and on and on. There are many books by this author that my 11-year-old can walk in and get, and I won't know about it. And they have cute little covers with emojis on it because it's in a texting format. So they look young and innocent. Yet librarians are buying these...
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Stacy.
Didn't hear the time. Thank you.
Kurt Burry, followed by Amber Walker.
You've heard of hustlers? You've heard of hustlers?
The floor is given to Kurt right now, sir. Sir?
In a child's library?
Hey.
I don't, don't be... I don't care. Don't be...
Let's, let's give the floor to Mr. Burry, please. It's his time to speak. Mr. Burry, go forward.
Thank you, Ms. President. Good evening. My name is Kurt Burry. I live in the city of Waukesha. I have four school-aged children. First, I want to thank the board for making a decision in May to remove just about all the COVID mitigation measures, especially the mask mandates. I'm very happy about that, so thank you. I was happy to read that in the school newsletter that was published in July, that the number of confirmed COVID cases did not increase among students and staff. So very happy to hear that, thank you. I want to talk about some of the books that are available in our high schools and middle schools. I'm not for banning books. Let's get that clear. I'm for more parental notification and transparency between parents and teachers. And to give an example, I'm going to cite another book. It's called Crank, published in, published in 2013, written by Ellen Hopkins. It's a story about a teenage girl that goes through a downward spiral because of a growing methamphetamine addiction. Now, this is a powerful book, but once again, I think it should have parental notification for these type of books, because it's available in all high schools and middle schools via the school library and on Overdrive. Just to read some of the passages, I am going to clean it up a little bit, but the passage that I have here describes a teenage girl getting raped. And this is available for 11-year-olds...
30 seconds.
...at a high school, at a, at a middle school. "Off came my shorts, down his zipper, I realized I was in serious trouble, I'll scream. Still, I opened my mouth, his hand slapped over it, those sublime muscles hardened. Had it been done a different way, I might have responded with excitement. Instead, he pushed inside. It went all right with an audible tear, pain mushroomed through my body." This should have parental notification. Like I said, it's a powerful book, but we need more collaboration and transparency between the teachers and the parents.
Thank you, Kurt.
That's what I asked for. Thank you.
Now, Amber Walker, followed by Tom Nitsky. Welcome, Amber.
So this book, bringing up again what is in our schools, it's making me very uncomfortable because as a person that has been sexually assaulted myself, this book definitely is not something that I would want my children to read. So this is called The Opposite of Innocence. This is about a man that's, or a girl that's about 14, and her dad, or it's about a girl that's 14 with a guy that's about her father's age. But Luke tightened his grips on my wrists and started mumbling how long he's waited, how long he's waited to touch me like this, and how his kissing... About how the kissing's been lovely, the kissing's been brilliant, but a man needs more, more than kissing. And I'll go mad, I'll start raving mad if I don't take things to the next level. Then suddenly, he reaches down to free his hand, and with one smooth motion, he unzips his fly. Luke lets out an awful groan, and I shrink away from him, pulling my knees up to my chest. He rakes his fingers through his hair. "I don't get it," he says. "I thought you cared about me. I thought you wanted me to make you feel good. I thought you were a woman, but maybe you're still just a kid." I try to push his hands away, but suddenly, my panties are around my ankles, and I'm struggling to sit up. But he's easing down onto me, pinning me under the crushing weight of his body. Tugging his jeans to everything's happening, and everything's happening way too fast. Now, his cold hands are on my knees, trying to spread my legs apart, but I'm clamping them together, clawing at his fingers, trying to pry them off me, and all while kissing my neck and mumbling. This is not appropriate for kids in school. This should not be something. This is something that a parent should have a conversation with their children with, not something that should just be in schools for kids to be able to read.
Thank you, Amber. Now, Tom, followed by Paul Reese. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Nitsky, and I'm a parent of an eighth-grade student at STEM Saratoga. I come here tonight to give you guys thanks for getting rid of the COVID mitigation plan in May and letting masks be optional and five days a week at school, and I hope that continues for '21, '22. I also like to thank the board for addressing critical race theory, canceling Dr. Shiraki Hawley, a critical race theorist, from speaking at the upcoming seminar for teachers at the end of the month. I really do appreciate that, and I thank you so much for that. I have a paragraph here that I was going to read about the books. And what I've heard tonight, I can't even come close to saying my disgust for what's in our libraries. My daughter is 13 years old. Scares the hell out of me that she might pick something up like that. Please, take those books out of the library or make sure that a parent knows that they've got them. Or just give them to the parents so that the parent can go over with their child, if so be it. But this is horrible. This is a version of child abuse. Sorry, I'm getting emotional, but it's awful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Paul, followed by Michelle Haleska.
I want to say right away, winner, winner, chicken dinner. I'm so happy to be back here. I also want to say congratulations to Kelly and Anthony. Great job. Glad to see you guys. Haven't got a chance to thank you for all you've done, so this is my first chance to thank you both. I only have two minutes, and I can't get in what I wanted to say, so I'm going to have to summarize. "Congress shall make no law..." The First Amendment of the Constitution. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the free..." Oh, I read that twice. "Or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right for people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress of their grievances." It doesn't say anything that I have to be respectful here. It doesn't say anything that I have to do that you can summarize and you can play games with on what I can and cannot say here. This is my opportunity to address you, and you don't have to like it. You can even demand... You can say absolutely... Say everything I said is malarkey. But I have to summarize tonight because I don't have enough time to get into it. So, what I'm going to say is boo to CRT.
Thirty seconds.
Boo to these masks, but most all, boo to you, Joe. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Now, Michelle, followed by Michael Haleska.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Haleska. I am a resident of Waukesha. My youngest son is going to be a senior at Waukesha West, and then I have a three-and-a-half-year-old who will be going probably into Prairie Elementary in about a year or so. So, along with what a lot of other people were saying, I want to say thank you for making masks optional. I appreciate it because, you know, I'm a parent, and, you know, I've parented, you know, two other... You know, I have four children total, and I'm really just grateful for that. So, thank you very much for allowing masks to be optional and getting rid of all the COVID mitigations. I also wanted to... I was a single parent, and I know I said this on Tuesday. I was a single parent, and I was raising my three kids. I'm now married with a three-and-a-half-year-old and the tail end of my 17-year-old. And, you know, I had no time to really investigate into all three of my kids what they were doing on such an intimate level. I really just trusted the teachers to, you know, with my children's lives. I had really no idea. And to hear what's being made available in our... It's disgusting. It is absolutely disgusting, and it's one of the big motivators for me to be more active in... At the school board level. So, thank you for that, for making me more...
Thirty seconds.
I want to say thank you also for canceling the racist and very divisive Shiraki Hawley, that seminar for the teachers this year that's been going in place for the last couple of years. Also, the district equity leadership team. I appreciate that that's being put on hold because I, too, like a lot of other people have shared, I believe in transparency. If we have nothing to hide, then why not make it available to everybody? And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Michael, followed by Becky Gilligan. Welcome, Michael.
I'm Michael Haleska. That was my wife. I wanted to thank you for your decision to remove the mask mandate and help us to continue to have a voice in what's happening with our children. And I've been reading a lot and getting involved in politics over the last year and looking at education. Like my wife said, we have a three-and-a-half-year-old that's looking to go into K4 or 4K, whatever it's called. But, you know, I was raised in a Catholic home and went to a Catholic school, and I know that the morals and values that were taught at our school were a lot different than some of the things that I'm hearing. You know, hearing a message of love and unity and forgiveness, that's what I grew up with and not division and hatred. And, you know, kids are going to have sex anyway, so we might as well just teach them how to, you know, masturbate and do whatever they want. So, those are the kind of icky messages that I'm hearing. I thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Becky, followed by Dr. Alex Rumashko. Hi, Becky.
Hello, I'm Becky Gilligan. So, I believe that decisions as important... As important as this must be, data-driven, so I did a literature poll to find really good expert data to share with you guys tonight. So, I know that the masks were made optional in May, and between May 29th and July 24th, according to the Waukesha... To the Department of Health and Human Services, the confirmed COVID-positive cases in Waukesha County by date, there were between zero and 24 cases of COVID per day. However, after July 26th, this number started to rise exponentially. And in fact, on August 9th, there were 238 confirmed COVID cases that day. And this coincides with the state laboratory of hygiene, their data, which showed that in July, greater than 70% of the positive COVID cases were of the Delta variant. Therefore, things have changed. COVID infects you by using its protein spike to pull apart an enzyme in your body that lives in your mucous membranes and get inside and start replicating. The Delta variant finds it a whole lot easier to use its spike to pull apart that enzyme and get in there to replicate, which means it's easier to catch. And it's also found to be up to two times more infectious.
Seconds.
Again, things have changed since May. I think you all need to take that into account and continue to use the experts' advice and what the experts say, and continue to use masks, which have been proven to be effective, given that as a substitute healthroom aide, I didn't really see any sick kids last year. As a nurse, we didn't see any flu last year. Masks work. Physical distancing, hand hygiene, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Now, Alex, followed by Monica Whaley.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Alex Rumashko. I was a pathologist at Waukesha Hospital until 2006, and I still maintain my license. I was asked by Jeremy Stomich, who is a physician in pro-health, in infectious disease. So, he's in the trenches seeing COVID and all stages of it and the people dying from it. So, he submitted a letter to you, and I'm going to read parts of it and paraphrase things. He couldn't be here because he had a previous meeting. He has a child who will be starting school in the Waukesha school system, so he has a reason to be concerned. He states that in the last week, there have been 94,000 children in the country who've had COVID. The children admitted to hospital have severe cases, and they're appearing at a rate of 225 per day for the past week. This is about a 27% increase over the prior week. There have been 500 recorded pediatric deaths in the United States. He states that this is a growing problem, and obviously, the number of COVID cases are increasing due to the Delta variant. So, he's talking about here having our kids attend class and understand that by going to school, they learn social and emotional skills, and for some...
Thirty seconds.
For some, there's actually... This is the only place to get a meal. So, he is advocating for kids over the age of 12 vaccination, and then over the age of... If they're not over the age of 12, wearing a mask. And I just want to point out that it's a mask that prevents other people from getting it. The virus particle is very minute, and it's in droplets.
Time.
Thank you, doctor. Monica, followed by Kennedy Freiberg. Welcome, Monica.
Good evening. My name is Monica Whaley. I'm a teacher and a parent in the school district. I signed up for extra time in case Dr. Rumashko needed it to fill you in on this letter. Obviously, he did a great job doing that, and you have a copy of the letter. I'm amazed tonight and disheartened because we seem to have moved on very quickly here. I think our reason for being here tonight should be discussion of the mask mandate, which I fully encourage you to put back into place. Our children are at a great risk of getting sick and dying, and I think that has to be our priority. I think the books that we're talking about in our library are an issue. As a parent, I get that. But we're talking about our children's lives, and I'm responsible for those children when they're in my classroom, for the content, for the relationship, for their well-being, physically, emotionally, mentally. That has to be our priority. I'm just going to end with this. Sometimes privilege and ignorance look a lot like being able to ignore a crisis that others are dying from. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Now, Kennedy, followed by Quinn Freiberg. Welcome, Kennedy. You may go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kennedy. I'm going to talk about the mask mandate in school. I don't feel safe along with a lot of other students with the mask mandate off. Please put back the mask mandate.
Thank you, Kennedy. Quinn, followed by Gretchen Sloan. Hi, Quinn.
Hello. I'm an eighth grader at Hornet Middle School, and today I'm here to talk about the need for mask mandates and other safety precautions in the 2021 and 2022 school year. As you all should know, the Delta variant is almost twice as transmittable in comparison to the original COVID-19 variant. On top of the mask mandate, contact tracing, and temperature checks will be needed to help us slow the spread of the virus when it inevitably hits our school district this fall. Because of its contagious nature, we will have a similar situation to last fall and winter, where so many people got sick, we had to go virtual. Most schools had to go virtual. This is obviously not a good thing, so that's why other students, parents, and I proposed the idea of a two-quarter mask mandate. With a two-quarter mask mandate, we would wear a mask for the first two quarters of the 2021 and 2022 school year. And by the end of the two terms, we would have a discussion on whether they are still needed. Elementary school students should be able to get vaccinated by then, and also, we will know more about the Delta variant. We need to know more because the Delta variant seems to be affecting us kids more than the COVID-19 originally did. According to the CDC, due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors of the K-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. Also, it takes about six weeks for vaccinations to wear in and actually start working, so it extends the period of time that us kids are at risk. As a school board, you are all responsible for the safety of over 12,000 students and about 1,600 staff members, and you need to take action. We can't pretend these issues don't exist. With people's lives and health at risk, personal politics should not be coming up in conversation. We should be safe rather than sorry. Also, I want to add, as a student, I appreciate the variety of books provided for us, and I am available to have open conversations with my parents about the topics at hand. This isn't the teacher's fault.
Thank you, Quinn. Gretchen, followed by Dan Shannon. Hi, Gretchen.
Hi. Hi, I'm a mom of four kids, including a third grader and a kindergartner at Randall Stun. I'm here to speak about urging for mandatory masking, especially for the under-12 crowd. I urge you to require masks at least until all students are able to be fully vaccinated. My son, who just graduated from Waukesha South, was bullied for wearing a mask when it was made optional by the board. He was mocked in person and sent messages. I'm sure the board can assure my younger children won't be made fun of if they're masked, and it's optional, correct? I'm not only a mom, I'm also an ICU nurse at Children's Wisconsin. I wear two masks at work for 13 hours. We take care of kids with COVID and MISC. I'm not going to go on a long tangent about MISC, but it's very serious, and I don't want any of our kids coming down with it. It's multi-system inflammatory syndrome associated with COVID. It's after, and we don't even know what the long-term effects of that are. Last year, my family decided to virtually teach our younger two children, who are now attending STEM, because what I saw firsthand at work. I was thankful we had the virtual option from our board that we no longer have today. My five-year-old and eight-year-old never mind wearing their masks, and I often have to remind them to remove them once they're in the car. They think adults are silly who get mad about masks. I don't want to take my child to work. I also don't want to take care of a Waukesha...
Thirty seconds.
...school district child with a breathing tube. One speaker said, "We didn't have any deaths from COVID last year in our school district." Is that good enough, not having any deaths? That's our benchmark? I'm asking that you follow the CDC recommendations and require masks until at least all of our students are able to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Dan, followed by Samuel D'Amico.
What was the next last name you called?
Dan Shannon?
Okay.
Yes. Welcome, Dan.
Hard to hear in the hallway, so...
Sure.
Dan Shannon. My daughter's a student in Waukesha North. I'm a Waukesha resident. Just speaking briefly, you've heard all the arguments before, but I really think this goes to how we care for the members of our community. I'm fortunate enough to have a family that can be fully vaccinated, but obviously, for many of our elementary school students, they don't have that choice yet. And I think we have to recall that there's a real cost, right? If kids get sick and they stay home from school, parents stay home from work, we're imposing costs on our community. And so, the question becomes, is there a way where we can put reasonable measures in place, lessen the likelihood of that cost on our community? There is. And if the cost of putting in that intervention is less than the cost of the consequence, it's worth it. Masks is that type of an intervention. So, we have a lot of experts, right? CDC, American Pediatrics Academy, medical doctors recommending interventions. We really should be listening to that. We're not the body charge of public health, right? You're the school board charge of education. I implore you to listen to experts. You're not medical doctors. You don't play... implore you to listen to experts. You're not medical doctors. You don't play one on TV. You shouldn't play one with the school board. We should be listening to sound advice and put prudence over politics.
Thank you, Dan. Sam, followed by Rebecca DeMore. Hi, Sam.
Hi. So my name is Samuel D'Amico. I'm going to be a ninth grader at Waukesha South, starting in September. And first, I'd like to start off with a quote from Anthony Zanovia. "I am not a doctor or scientist. I do occasionally play one on Waukesha School District TV." I think we should all believe Mr. Zanovia when he says this, because for once, what he is saying is true. He is not a doctor or a scientist. Nor does he even listen to doctors or scientists. As a matter of fact, he discredits them. Right now, we are in the midst of a public health crisis. Now, that phrase might sound familiar. That is exactly what I said in May, when the topic of repealing the mask mandate was up for a vote. And that phrase is just as true now as it was then. Cases are rising in Waukesha County by anywhere from 20 to hundreds of cases, new cases, per day, and the vaccination rate has been stagnant below 60% in Waukesha County. And on the 27th of July, the Centers for Disease Control came out with updated guidance that all students, staff members, and visitors should wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. Later that week, on the 27th, I sent out an email to six school board members, and the response I got from Mr. Zanovia was shocking. And I quote, "If cases rise high enough and trigger these protocols, then we will reveal," end quote. Well, Mr. Zanovia, they have. It seemed as if he was ignoring the rising cases, ignoring the stagnant vaccination rate, ignoring the CDC guidance. Well, of course he has, because he's here again tonight pretending to be a doctor or a scientist, apparently.
Thirty seconds.
While people in Waukesha County are contracting COVID-19 and dying from it. Now, I made the front page of the Waukesha Freeman on Tuesday, and to be honest, it's not for something that I'm proud of. I'm not proud that after almost two years of this pandemic, we need a mask mandate. I want to go back five days a week, and I don't want to wear a mask, but it seems that with our public health crisis, it is what is needed. And I'm asking for the school board to do their job and follow CDC guidance, not partisan politics.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Rebecca, followed by Monica Retschlag. Rebecca DeMore.
Can we close the door?
I'm sorry.
Can we close the door?
No.
It's open meetings. So Rebecca DeMore.
Yeah, we have to close the door.
Rebecca DeMore. Is Rebecca here?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Rebecca. Yes, it is your turn.
I'd just like to submit these, please, to the board. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, my name is Rebecca. I live in Waukesha. My son will be a first grader in the Waukesha School District. There is currently no COVID vaccine available for my children who are ages six and three. I'm here again today respectfully to implore this school board to follow the guidance of the American Academy of Pediatrics, Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and the Waukesha County Public Health Department. For the record, I have submitted statements from the American Academy of Pediatrics, which is an organization of 67,000 pediatricians, by the way, and Children's Hospital of Wisconsin. Both of these recommend everyone older than two wear masks in schools regardless of vaccination status. Those who defend a masks-optional approach often discuss their personal freedoms and rights. It should be the individual parent's choice, they may say. Parents making individual decisions for their kids is a value I share, but not in matters of public health when there is a contagious virus in a global pandemic. There is a break in the logic to the personal freedoms argument, you must see, because by voting that masks in schools remain optional, this school board has refused to follow the science-based guidance to keep my child safe in school. My rights and the rights of families like mine, who wish to send our schools, our children, to a school where health and safety are prioritized, have been violated. And beyond district families, a masks-optional approach may lead to a spread, which also infringes on the rights of our greater community. My final submission to the board includes our updated COVID case numbers in Waukesha County. Today, we have moved from high to very high activity level by the Wisconsin Department of Public Health, and the current seven-day average of new COVID cases in Wisconsin is higher than it's been in nearly six months. Our case numbers continue to rise. Masks, quarantines, ventilation, and disinfection are preventative measures. Please don't wait for there to be more sick children before following this guidance.
Thank you, Rebecca. Monica, followed by Michael Dorr.
Good evening.
Welcome, Monica.
Hi there. I've written to the board a number of times, but I'm here in person tonight to tell you I'm angry, and I'm not alone. I've had enough of the politics and enough of the personal agendas that are driving policy. It doesn't belong here. Because of the chaos of last year, my husband and I pulled both of our elementary children to virtual, because we didn't have faith that you would protect them. Here we are, a year later, heading back in person without any mitigation procedures in place and no regard for their safety. My children, all children, deserve safe, in-person learning. I am furious I need to stand here a year later to convince you to protect our kids. All policy considerations for school plans should start with the goal of keeping students safe and physically present in school. That should be your goal. Ignoring the health and safety recommendations of reputable experts is nothing short of gross negligence. Basic COVID risk mitigation can keep kids in classrooms and healthy. At a minimum, masks should be required. In case you missed it, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, and the Waukesha Health Department are all advocating wearing face masks in schools. Our own pediatrician, a board-certified expert in pediatric medicine, has also recommended children in school wear facial coverings. We trust his expert advice, and so should you. There is not one medical doctor, epidemiologist, or infectious disease expert
Thirty seconds.
...on this board, although some of you like to claim so on Facebook. I don't know how to explain that you should care about other people. You should care your decisions affect more than 14,000 other people, people too young to be vaccinated, immunocompromised. Students with IEPs that you are legally obligated to serve. It's time for you to act, to do the right thing, and to care about other people. Enough is enough.
Monica. Michael Dorr, followed by Amy Menzel. Welcome, Michael.
Yes. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Seabird. My name is Michael Durr, and I'm a resident of the Waukesha School District and a parent of an 11-year-old student moving from Randall Stem to Saratoga Middle School this year. I'm speaking to you this evening to thank you for the quick reversal of the mask mandate at the end of this past school year, and I encourage you to continue the mask-optional policy in the 2021-22 school year. On Monday, I sent you all an excellent editorial from the Wall Street Journal that addresses mask mandates and their effect on children. In essence, the editorial explains how much harm is done to children from masks that is never taken into consideration in the mask requirement analysis. Carbon dioxide, dirty masks, pathogens trapped in masks, and social implications of mask-wearing never seem to enter the mass conversation, rather, only those issues that are tied to COVID. Many people have come to realize that there is little to no benefit in people wearing masks. This editorial was co-authored by Dr. Marty Marky, professor at the John Hopkins School of Medicine, editor-in-chief at MetaPage Today, and the author of The Price We Pay, and co-authored by Dr. H. Cody Meisner, chief of Pediatric Infectious Disease at Tufts Children's Hospital, who has served on the FDA External Advisory Panel for COVID-19 vaccines.
Thirty seconds.
And these gentlemen are currently not lightweights. When or if the pressure increases to reinstate the mask mandate, I encourage you to weigh all the evidence at hand and not just listen to those barking at a meeting on a given evening. There's a significant number of your constituents who support your decision to continue the mask-optional policy. I thank you for your time and for your service to the community.
Thank you, Michael. Followed by Carl Dorr. Welcome, Amy.
I thought you said Amy Menzel?
Yes, Amy. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. I'm here to address issues of equity again. As a reminder, I provide my contact information to all of you via email. I would love to continue to deepen these conversations with each of you. For now, I'd like to share some insight that may help provide additional context to understand the importance of this work. I was in a room with 20 or more of our Black students while they talked about their experience at Waukesha West. At one point, they talked about hearing other students use the N-word in school. Someone posed the question, "How many have heard others use the N-word at West?" Every single student raised their hand. I was shocked and saddened. I hope you have a similar reaction. I assume we are in agreement that this is a problem. My question is, how do we address this problem without talking about issues of race and racism? It's a rhetorical question, of course, because we can't. We can't best serve our students if we're not responding to their lived experience. Every student deserves to be seen, heard, and valued. They deserve to know that equity is something we value in the school district of Waukesha. They deserve to feel the support of equitable practices and policies. My guess is that many, perhaps most of you, had no idea that this was part of the lived experience of many of our students, and in our schools nonetheless. This cannot be an excuse.
Thirty seconds.
We need to consider whose voices are being heard in these discussions and whose are not. We need to ensure that all voices are heard. If folks aren't coming to these meetings, and many students and families are not attending these meetings, we need to seek them out, because every student deserves to be seen, heard, and valued. I see these students. Now you've heard their experience. Use your power to show that they are valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Carl, followed by Melissa Bushman. Welcome, Carl.
Good evening, school board. My name is Carl Durr, and I will be attending sixth grade at STEM Saratoga this fall. I would like to speak to you this evening about masks required versus masks optional. When masks were made optional last year, I had many friends who chose to continue wearing a mask, and I respect that decision. My choice was not to wear a mask, and I ask for others to respect my decision, too. With COVID now over a year old, we know a lot more about it, like kids are not affected by it as much as adults, and also, teachers can get vaccinated if they choose. This means the decision to wear a mask for kids in school should stay with the kids and their parents, and not up to people who make decisions for others. Thank you, school board, for your time.
Melissa, followed by James Touchstone. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I have a first and a second grader going to this district this year, and I implore you to please reinstate the mitigations, reinstate the mask mandates. Kids make up 15% of the COVID cases in the U.S. right now. COVID cases in pediatrics are on the rise. You have clear guidance from the CDC, the AAP, the Waukesha Public Health Department. How many children is acceptable in your eyes to get sick and die? Will you take, what will it take, you guys? How many? How many will it take for you guys to follow that guidance? Will you visit the sick children in the hospital, the ones that are under your leadership? If a child dies under your leadership, will you talk to the families? Will you accept responsibility for not following the science? The reason I keep being given that you guys are against mask mandates is parental choice. What about the sick policy? Under the parental choice logic, if I believe my child is okay and not too sick to go to school with 102 fever, I should be able to choose that. That is what I've been given as a reason against mask mandates. The problem with that flawed logic is that parents can and will inevitably make the wrong choice, and others will get sick.
Thirty seconds.
That logic doesn't work, but masks scientifically do. Rather than trying to make a political stand, please, please protect our children.
Thank you, Melissa. James, followed by Mary Zarz. Welcome, James.
Hey, welcome. Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I just want to talk real quick. I was listening to the word of the National Anthem the other day, and the last line in particular, it says, "As the star-spangled banner waves in triumph shall wave over the home of the free and the land of the brave." As a history buff, just this last couple weeks, I've been reading a book. That sentence ends in a question mark. The point is, we will only remain free if we are brave. Bravery is going with what is right, not what is popular. The brave choice, the right choice, is to allow us parents to do what is right for their children and themselves. Only when we are brave will we be free. Without bravery, there is no freedom. So I ask that this board keep the COVID protocols the same as a brave decision that allows for the freedom of choice. The second point is to be brave in transparency regarding the curriculum, regarding the books in the library, articles presented, the entire teaching process that our children go through. As a parent of six kids that have gone through the Waukesha School District, that's something that I've always been active with. I ask that the board, the teachers, the principals, administrators partner with us as parents to teach our children in the best possible manner. We're not enemies in this march towards a better education for our children. We all want the same goal. So let us go forward together with freedom, freedom to choose as parents in what we feel is right for our children. Let us draw on the bravery and courage of those who have gone before us.
Thirty seconds.
Sitting Bull, Rosa Parks, Abraham Lincoln, William Wilberforce, Mother Teresa. Let us be brave together and create a positive learning environment where parents, teachers, administrators, school board, all work together towards a future for our kids. Parents are ultimately responsible for their children's upbringing, and I think that we can agree that things are somewhat of a wreck in some areas, as by seen by the past few meetings. Concerned parents is what want what is best for their children. I just ask that everyone is brave
Thank you, James.
...in making the right choices for their parents, for their kids.
Thank you, James. Mary, followed by Erica Kuhansky. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. It's almost, I'm almost at the end. I'd like to talk today about racial theory, if I may, that's entering, or trying to enter into all the school systems in the country. Somebody said a long time ago, "United, we stand, and divided, we fall," and that is very true to our entire country. And so there's an agenda, I feel, that's going on, and it was in the colleges, and now it's getting into the lower grades in school and elementary. And that is the theory that we, well, it is very divisive. And such a theory is, it can become hateful, it can cause a lot of confusion, and a lot of problems in the society at large. And that's why it's so important to teach the children to love one another and be respectful of other people. And a lot of this theory started in the South, in the old South, during, and we don't hear enough about that, about the Jim Crow laws. And it was 90 years, almost 90 years
Thirty seconds.
...where Blacks, what?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, my God. Where Blacks were exposed to the one-party rule down there, and they were so abused. And now, somebody who would live down there would think that whites are abusers, and the Blacks were abused. But this is true, and that's, and racism, the systematic racism was down South during that time, but now it's gone.
Thank you, Mary. Erica, followed by Mitsukido. Hi, Erica.
Hi. My name is Erica Kuhansky. My husband, Darren, and I live in Waukesha. We actually just moved here with our two daughters, Juliette and Rosalie, and we're hoping that Rosalie will be able to be a first grader in the dual-language program at Bethesda this fall. I'm here today to plead with you to call a special school board meeting to discuss COVID mitigation, specifically mandatory masking, as soon as COVID mitigation, specifically mandatory masking as soon as possible, but most definitely prior to the start of the school year. According to the school district of Waukesha's website, quote, "The board would meet to discuss transitioning amongst learning models if six of eight criteria are met," end quote. "Five of the eight criteria cannot be met at this time because school is not in session. Three of the eight criteria, the community criteria, can be and are currently met to warrant a special meeting." Community criteria number one, 1,000 new cases over 10-day period. As of today, per the Wisconsin DHS website, the 10-day average is 1,084.7 cases per day. Community criteria number two, 75% of hospital acute beds full. As of today, per the Wisconsin DHS, 86.8% of hospital beds are full. Community criteria number three, 85% of hospital ICU beds full. As of today, per the Wisconsin DHS website, 89.5% of ICU beds are full. Therefore, 100% of the applicable criteria have been met to call a special board meeting to address COVID mitigation prior to the start of the school year. Today, after providing this information to the superintendent and all members of the school board, I received one email stating, quote, "We will be using the transition criteria focused on the school district of Waukesha area once the school year begins. Why would we not proactively put measures in place prior to the start of the school year based on various reputable recommendations and statistics? Why are you avoiding calling a meeting to at least discuss COVID mitigation?"
Thank you, Erica. Mitzi, followed by Mandy Porcher-Dasty. Welcome, Mitzi.
Thank you. Mitzi Kittle, 134 Garfield Avenue. This is August, not May. I'm speaking in support of the updated CDC guidelines for school, universal masking regardless of vaccination status. Educators understand the importance of parent input, the range of student differences, the mental and physical challenges of masks, as well as COVID's impact on learning. But without, as of yet, unapproved vaccination for children under 12, this is the situation we are in. Despite that all we've already been through and the heated discussion, one fact remains clear: the virus does not care. The virus does not care what we think or what we feel. It is a communicable disease. Thankfully, we have dedicated scientists and public service agencies who have been working to lead in mitigation. Follow the science. Having been in the classroom for many years, you'd be surprised at the number of students who are in classrooms with underlying medical conditions. Do not let go unchallenged any discrediting of the CDC by any of your former board members. If someone uses another source of data to sway a decision, demand that that source be known and vetted. You do not need to make decisions for a whole school year. If conditions ease, restrictions can always be lifted. Why would you not err on the side of caution when health and safety are factors? Thank you.
Thank you, Mitzi. And Mandy? Mandy? Welcome, Mandy.
Thank you, hi. Thanks for letting me speak, and thanks again, everyone here. I know you guys' job has been difficult over the last year. And I'm here to just, again, with the other speakers who've talked about masking, I think we need to pivot back to masks. Unfortunately, the Delta virus is a whole new ballgame. It's 1,000% more infectious. It's probably one of the most infectious respiratory viruses out there, and masking is one mitigation. Last year, we were able to keep infections low in school, and it is from the mitigation efforts that you guys imposed, including masking. And we know that in school districts where initially didn't have strong mask requirements or recommendations, they had a lot more issues with outbreaks. And we're seeing that now in southern states, including Alabama, Arkansas, where some of those school districts are having to pivot back to masking because of outbreaks, and it's all, again, related to the Delta virus. We're also seeing ICUs in the southern states, including Texas, being overrun in the pediatric wards. So it is hitting kids. We don't know if it's more severe of the illness, or it's just a lot more contagious, so a lot more kids are getting sick. Right now, 20% of the cases in the U.S. are pediatric. In Wisconsin, we're seeing, we're the fourth worst state in terms of rate of infection. So it is here. I work for a hospital system in Milwaukee. We're now on, we're diverting because our hospital is full. We're having to divert to other hospitals.
30 seconds.
So my point is, we need to pivot. We need to bring back masks. If we want to keep kids in school, keep them healthy, keep them around so they can be, at the end of the school year, not sick with chronic conditions, and here. And I hope that you guys really think about where we are in this virus today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Thank you, everyone. I know I speak on the behalf of my fellow board members, and I thank you for, you know, your passionate comments tonight. At this time, we will be adhering to the tenets of our district COVID-19 letter that was approved by the Board of Education on July 7th and shared with our families on July 8th. Key components include masks are optional, students will move from room to room for specials, vaccination and testing are family decisions, daily cleaning will continue to occur by our custodial staff, our e-achieve virtual school option remains open and available for the kids and families, and now offers 4K through 12th grade opportunities. We will monitor COVID-19 cases in our schools and community. We will have our positive cases for students and staff dashboard, as well as our transition criteria, once again, in a prominent place on our website. And if we meet six of the eight transition criteria, we will hold a special meeting here, or where our administration would make recommendations to the Board of Education regarding possible mitigation or learning model adjustments. And we look forward to partnering with you as we begin the 2122 school year in just three weeks. Thank you. Moving on. Moving on to our minute approval, we do have a set of minutes for your consideration. For the Board of Regular, the regular Board of Education meeting on July 7th is the only set of minutes that we need to approve tonight. I'd be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Montiel. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Dietz. Any discussion, corrections? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
I have to abstain, I was absent that night.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. It passes 701, Sue. Moving on to our communications part of our meeting. Dr. Seibert, did we receive any?
We did not, Mr. Como.
Okay. And then our Waukesha Education Foundation report, did we have a meeting this last month?
We did, Mr. President, and Waukesha Education Foundation continues their great work for the district and its students and teachers. The last meeting was August 5th of this year. We had a number of notable donations, I believe seven or more. For the privacy of those donors, we're not disclosing them, but we thank them for their great support to the district and its teachers. And we also had a number of notable pledges, which also were greatly appreciated for the WEF and the district. The Partners in Education event was well-attended this year. Those in attendance had a great time, and the weather was perfect. Thank you to Melissa and Jenica for coming early to help Lynette and the other staff members set up, and for Jenica for taking such great pictures. I saw them, and they looked fantastic. So the golf outing also this year, which I believe was last week, was a huge success. We had about, well, exactly 147 participants, which was a record number of participants. And again, we had perfect weather, albeit a little hot. So thank you to all the board members that were there, that participated as golfers and volunteers, it was a huge help. Thank you to the Golf Committee, Angela Schaaf, Victor Frazier, Ron Yonkey, and Gina Nordham. Their efforts were much appreciated. One of the biggest efforts WEF will have this year is the Evening for Education. It's a wonderful event, and encourage you all to attend. It will be held at the Marriott Hotel on October 1, I'm sorry, October 21st, 2021. The awards committee met and decisions, or made decisions for the 2021 award recipients that will be recognized at that event this year. So stay tuned. The spot, there have been several sponsorships already, and we do expect some more in the next weeks. If you know individuals or corporations that are interested in doing that, please contact the Waukesha Education Foundation on our, the WEF website, on their landing page, there is a link for the Evening for Education. So we'd ask for your support and see what you can do and your companies can do to support that event. The Marketing and Business Community Outreach Committee continues their good work. They have continued to receive annual sponsorships, and we'd like to thank in particular Eaton Corporation, who renewed their sponsorship, and CJ and Associates, who also renewed their sponsorship. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Montiel. Always good news with Waukesha Education Foundation. Moving on to our Charter School and Program Report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, I just have one organization I wanted to mention, too, because I feel it should be noted. A lot of our kids in our population might benefit from this. It is the, and this is a mouthful, I'll apologize for that, but it is called the Scholastic Fund for Students of Hispanic Descent, or SFSHD, if you look on the internet. It has been there for some time, but not widely known, I think, at least by me and some other people. Students in Waukesha with Hispanic background can apply for scholarship funding through this organization. Many children have benefited from this in the past. I guess it's gone on 50 or 60 years, just not as publicly as we'd like it to be. I am informed, though, that in just the last year, 22 of our students benefited from that program. So I'm just making it there so that you are aware of it, and if you are aware of families that might need that kind of help, help. Or I can tell them who to talk to, so.
Sure.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart, appreciate that. We have, next on the agenda, CISA One report given by Ms. Ryancheck, but she was unable to be here this evening, so we will delay that by a month. Moving on to our consent agenda, Mr. Clark, did we have any public gifts?
Yeah, two gifts. Les Paul Middle School received $5,000 from Paul, and Kathleen Omen to be used for mass, science, and technology integration in the classrooms. And West High School received $2,000 from Sharon Bloom to be used for Waukesha West Girls Basketball Program.
Thank you, and thank you for your generosity. We appreciate that very much. There were no expulsions this month, and we do have one policy that's included in our consent agenda, policy number 0167.3, public comment at board meetings. If anyone wishes to set aside anything on the agenda, now would be the time to indicate, and I would like to set aside for a separate discussion the policy number 0167.3. Is there anything else that anyone would like to have set aside for a separate discussion?
I have a question on that point, and I have no, it's not an issue about setting it aside. I think we should have, because there's an awful lot of the impact to this policy to the board members, I want them to be aware of what we've been talking about in that policy.
Sure.
Now, I don't know if you want to explain why you want it set aside, or if you want me to go through just a brief overview of what we've covered in that policy? How would you like me to present that?
Sure. Good question. First of all, is there anything else that anyone wanted set aside? Okay, I didn't see that. So feel free, why don't you outline what those changes are?
And I can do that relatively quickly. The, and all of you have received this, modified 0167.3 about public comment, and we had a good discussion of this in our last committee meeting. Some presentation were made by Dr. Piasik here, which helped us understand it. There's just four points that I'd like to make sure you are aware of. One of the points deals with the open community public comment, and quite simply, that we have modified here so that the announcement does not have to include their address, because there is some issues about people letting their address out, and this takes away that. The address is kept in the records, but it's not publicly announced. So that's item number D in here. Item number E in here talks about the amount of time that is spent in the presentation from the public. As it has been and would continue to be, it would be a three-minute time, but we thought that if we have under six people in there, and they have a little bit running over on the three minutes, we don't have to necessarily shut them down. Now, that was not the case this evening, but where we just have a couple people or up to six people, maybe we could, if they go over three minutes, we're not going to have to say, you know, stop. So that's part of the, that's part of the potential change to this policy. We talked in here, and you'll find in the next page, speakers are requested to direct their comments to the board, specifically to the presiding officer of the board, or the board committee if it is a committee meeting. So that's addressed there. And then, under item I, number five, it deals with a situation that could arise where the speaker is not necessarily properly behaving and makes comments such as that. And the point being made in this one deals with how we will determine what kind of action will be taken with that particular individual. Now, those are, wait a minute, I'm sorry, there's... No, I think that pretty well covered it. Did I miss, committee member, you okay, is what I, I made a brief on that? Okay. So that's what this is about, in kind of a summary of what we're talking about in here. And committee met on it, and that's where they are, but if you wanted to discuss with maybe some more detail, I understand that.
Okay. Yeah, so, and I appreciate the hard work that the committee's done, and I agree with most of the points that were made. There are just a couple of things that I'm going to suggest that we might take a little deeper look at. One thing, I agree that, you know, from a safety perspective, not having to announce your address on television, I think, is a good, good change. However, I do think you might want to consider knowing whether or not someone resides within our district. I think it's important for us to understand when we're listening to our constituents versus when we're listening to perhaps someone from out of state or out of our area. So just, just an idea. Really, mostly, I wanted to focus on item I, number five, that deals with the suspension of individuals addressing the Board of Education. I can appreciate the discussion that has occurred, but what I wanted to do was to perhaps ask a few questions and provide some insight as to what has occurred in the past in this process. I'll start with some questions. First one deals with, would we have to call a special meeting for this? I'm assuming we would. So if someone we felt should not be able to address the board, you know, where does that meeting occur? So I'm assuming it would be a special meeting. And if so, you know, how would that be posted? Would the individuals or multiple people be listed? You know? Is it legal to list their names? Should their names be listed? I don't know. We can't hold a closed session, I don't believe. This would have to be done in open session, but I would like to know if this could be done in closed session or not. And what if we do have multiple offenders? What if there's five people at one meeting? 10 people, maybe a whole group? Maybe a whole group? How do we handle that? Would that be individual notices? Individual being covered separate meetings? You know, just again, some questions, some things to, to think about. I want to also just share with you that any time that we have suspended the right for our citizen to come and address us, that was, that was a pretty tough decision, trying to balance out a number of things. First Amendment rights, respect, you know, the, you know, how, how things are being played out. And I can tell you that none of those decisions have ever been made lightly, or have, they've been quick decisions. The president, myself, and Doc, Dr. Seibert as superintendent this year, made some judgment calls per our current policy, just to suspend a couple of people of addressing us. We met many times on this, for many hours, over the course of many days. We reviewed videotape. We decided that we would bring in our legal counsel. We had time in there for reflection. We drafted the letters, and we had our legal counsel review those letters to make sure that we were not breaking any statutes. The letters were delivered via certified mail and email, and again, this wasn't a quick process. It was a deliberate process, and we took our time. It wasn't easy by any, by any means. And so I just thought I would share that with you. It's a, the current process is a little bit more of a subtle kind of process. I can see where we might want to expand that out to the full board's consideration. But, you know, it's going to be very public for that individual and/or multiple people that we would be talking about, and I just wanted to make sure that some of those things were discussed. And I would, I would ask that we would return this to your, you know, the policy committee to take some of these, these things into consideration.
That is certainly an option, and I think I might agree with that option. We could, I've made notes, we could, we could review these. I don't see a time requirement on this. You know, in all honesty, this is not something that happens frequently. I've been around 25-plus years, and I, we've got two that I know of. So let's hope we don't have any more, but relative, and I'm thinking about this, actually while I'm talking, this is probably dangerous, right? Regarding number D, where you talked about, do they live in Waukesha or not? We actually had, I don't know if we had a brief con, question on that, or if I had a brief question on that one, because I was thinking about it, but I don't know if it came up at our meeting. Kelly, do you recall, you know, the person lives in Waukesha or not?
Well, it's not required that a speaker live. It's not required that a speaker live.
It had been at one time, but it is not now. Maybe we should talk about that in that, another committee meeting, I guess. I don't, I'm not really comfortable with either way right now. I think we need to talk about it. I don't think we should vote on it tonight, I guess is what I'm saying. We could vote on the rest of it, because, well, that would, that would be kind of clumsy. I'm going to ask, Kelly, you, you've put a lot of work into this. Do you have any particular views about taking it right now or not?
May I?
Yes.
I know Mr. Montiel wanted to offer comment as well.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Piasik.
Well, I mean, I do think we've spent quite a bit of time on it, so.
Yes, we did.
And, and just, just to kind of go back in committee, a past 5-0 in committee. I do appreciate the, the process-related comments, and I could, I could understand or consider an opportunity for people to say that they do or don't live within the district limits. I think that's what you're getting at. You know, procedurally, I think that's an important question, but I also do think that it should be difficult, and I think that there should be some transparency to the board on decisions to remove people from speaking. And I hope it doesn't happen too often, but I think the attempt was to make the rules a little bit more clear and consistent. So, you know, taking it back, it's just another, it's another round. We do have a committee meeting.
Next week.
Next week.
Tuesday. Mr. Montiel?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was somebody else speaking.
Oh, thank you. I understand the, I guess, the genesis behind this and the efforts to try to make things more, I guess, palatable and try to make everybody follow a certain decorum. The problem I have with this is it's, I think, stretching into what is content, it's violating content neutrality, because the wording in the proposed talks about egregious, disruptive behavior, or offensive language. Just to try to define those on an objective standard, I think, is nearly impossible. As, as happened tonight, offensive language, who defines that? If you're going to read out of a textbook, is that offensive? Is it disruptive to read out of a textbook? You know, what's egregious? What's repeated? I look at the prior, or the current policy, statements, too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. I think it's tighter language. The only thing that I think would be somewhat debatable is obscene, but there has been definitions of that. So I do not support limiting First Amendment rights, especially to elected officials in a public forum, unless it is basically where the policy is now, and obscene is the one that I think would be, you know, open to interpretation. To have the board vote on this, I have the same questions as you, Mr. President, how do we do that? And how do we put someone who has expressed the First Amendment rights basically on trial to do that? I get the idea, I get the, the motivation. I just think we're walking into a, a standard that's not objective, I'm sorry, that is subjective, not objective. So I'd ask respectfully, goes back to the committee, and rework it.
If I could just clarify, or maybe comment, I don't think the current process is objective and transparent, and I think that's what we're trying to correct. So I appreciate and respect the feedback. I think there are some, some tightening of words that would make sense. From a procedural perspective, you know, there is a lot of room between a board meeting, public decision, and behind closed doors, individual decision. And I think we have to find ourselves somewhere in the middle of that and make it a, just a little more fair and transparent and consistent, so that the boundaries are clear.
I think we're going to take it up next Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, at least begin taking it up next Tuesday.
Take it back to committee and...
I think this generates more, I appreciate this, it generates some questions that we maybe didn't completely cover, and relative to how specific we can, or can, or should be, that's a good point.
And I did watch the meeting, and I wished I could have maybe been there to make some of these comments at the time.
Well, that's all right.
But I wasn't.
It's not urgent, hopefully it's not urgent, and we will go into the detail. And by the way, any other board member that wants to be there next Tuesday, and I don't have the date in my head, 17th, I do have my date in my head, 6 o'clock, so.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So that one would be set aside from the Consent Agenda.
Yes.
For this evening.
Yes. But everything else in the Consent Agenda still be in the motion for this evening? Okay? Yes.
Just a parliamentary procedure, we will need to take some sort of action on this policy, so would there be a motion? I assume there would be a motion to return it to committee.
Sure, I will make a motion to refer this back to committee. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Amanda. We've been informal about it in the past, but I appreciate the formality, too. So will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
William Baumgartner.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 8-0, Sue. So moving on, Ms. Roddy, will you please present our Consent Agenda as amended?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of six resignations, one leave of absence, and 25 new or modified teacher contracts. This information was provided in your packet, and addendum was placed on your desk. I move the Consent Agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Dietz. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgartner.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 8-0, Sue. Thank you, Amanda. Moving on to Dr. Seibert's superintendent report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Como. Tonight, this is very quickly, I just wanted to provide the board with an overview of some of my summer connections in the community, which have been joyous, and I'm glad we're finally getting around to. I'll start with visits with our local legislators and elected officials as part of the outreach designed by our Government Relations Committee. We've met now with six of our legislators and locally elected officials to date. We have four more that we're looking forward to in the coming months. When I say "we," I'm referring to Ms. Reinacek, Mrs. Roddy, Mr. Zenobia, and Mr. Clark as well, all of whom are members of the Government Relations Committee. And then, secondly, I've been doing tours and making connections with local business leaders and our made partner businesses as well, and I've been joined on these visits by our Career and Technical Education Coordinator, Molly Habenschall. We've connected so far with nine local businesses, and we have eight more that we either have scheduled or we're working on some calendar logistics with. And both of these experiences have been just tremendous as I work to build relationships throughout the Waukesha community. And then, as Mr. Como stated earlier, just very excited that in just three weeks, we will kick off the 21-22 school year. So that's all I have, Mr. Como.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. Moving on to our committee reports, as you know, we do rotate out who presents in first, and first up this month is the Human Resource and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no action items this evening, and we have no information to discuss, so that concludes my report.
That was quick. Thank you. Moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgartner.
Well, back, yes, back to me. And I know it looks like a lot, but this is actually going to be, hopefully, quite simple. We had at our board, excuse me, our committee meeting last month, we did have a number of policies discussed, or brought for discussion is a better word, and rightfully so. If a committee member has a question on a policy, we can discuss it, try and resolve it if necessary. We had a half a dozen or so there. Policy 5320 on immunizations, quite simply was settled in the fact that we do not participate in COVID immunizations with our school district, that's handled outside the district. We, that's not our baby. Policies 5310 and 5310.01, Emerg, Health Services and Emergency Nursing Services. We did look at those policies to see what was contained in them. There was a question about invasive physical examination that comes in our sports when athletics are doing, we have doctors that come in and check people over for football or whatever it might be. It is not a normal thing for a lot of students, so I think that's what we were trying to set that one to rest. We have policies regarding our committees, kind of to define some of our committees, what they are, citizens advisory committees, the open meetings, excuse, that's, that's the next step. We are looking at some of the committees to make sure that they are following our own policies, the way they are written and put together. That's, that's not a quiet issue at this point, and it's going to be continued as we look through some, not the board committees, but some of the other committees that are in the district. And Dr. Seibert is aware of that and is doing some research just to make sure everything is properly aligned. Dress and grooming was discussed as one of the policies in question, and as we talked to Dr. Cook about that, it really comes down to the fact that this, first of all, this is always a tough one, and we've been through this for, for years, but the majority of the responsibility falls on the individual schools principal to see to it that things are not getting out of line relative to the clothes our kids are wearing. There are some limits on there in terms of what the hats you're wearing and T-shirts and whatnot. Those are in the policy, but everything cannot be defined clearly as to what's appropriate and not appropriate, and I have no better answer than that. So if somebody else has one, we'd be electing to use it. And then there was, in Policies 164.1, 165.1, 164.2, and 165.2, the way we set up our policies in terms of the scheduling, and once a month for the board, and then when, that's all was handled at the committee, and there are no changes to the policies that were written here. That was a question I'm sure people had, are you going to change all these policies? No. That's, that's basically my report.
Okay. These are discussion items?
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. Regarding Policy 5511, regarding dress and grooming, I have heard mostly from my 11-year-old daughter, that there's some concern that, that this application and enforcement of this be gender neutral, LGBTQ neutral, which I assume it is, but could we put something in the policy that it'll be neutral in application and enforcement regarding gender and all those other categories? Probably overstating the necessity for it, but there's issues with midriffs with girls and midriffs with guys, something like that. So if we could just maybe add something to the policy to address the issue?
If you would, I will just take this, and I'd like to talk deeper with Joe when he gets back, and determine whether we're going to take that into the next meeting or the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Because we've got some stuff lined up for next week, but we'll, I will write it down, and I understand your wording.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on any of these policies that are on the table for discussion? Mr. Zenobia?
A few, a few of them, and I feel the need to comment, because I brought a lot of these to the attention of the committee at the time. If I could take, take them in a couple of groups here. The first being the immunizations, along with the Health Services and Emergency Nursing Services. When we were having the discussion on immunizations, we weren't sure where to put this one. It came to the committee, because there's a policy on it. At the same time, a lot of parents had addressed these other two policies, because there's things in them that were not, I don't understand how applied, and so they were worried that some of these policies could be applied for immunizations as well. At the last committee meeting, I think the last two, Dr. Cook, who's not here tonight, went over those. I think he did a great job of kind of explaining what the use of those policies, policies have been in the past. The only outlier would be going forward with immunizations. Now, I know administrations addressed this in their letter, and I think that's a good job there. I would just say that this specific policy being immunizations...
Can you speak a little closer?
Okay. I was just saying that the immunization policy may be needed to be reviewed. It may be, but as things change, which seem to be very fluid, that would be the only policy of the health ones that may need more consideration in the future. On the committee policies, again, I want to thank the administration for taking some action in some of the things that they've paused, one being the, the Delt team, and also the Holly teachings for professional development. So the, the point in bringing up the committees was, if we have policies written on specific committees, and how committees are to be handled, then how did some of the things operate? And I think that's something that these policies need to continue to work through in the future. I think the committee will continue to do that, but those discussion items as why this was brought up, I just want to be clear, the thinking behind it, and, and why this was talked about, so.
Sure. Sure. Mr. Baumgartner, do you?
That's okay, I appreciate that, and... And this is a reminder, as part of the committee, any of us can raise those questions. And I appreciate the fact, and you've got one open right now that we, you know, about controversial classroom curriculum. So that's the way we operate. And if he, you know, has a question or anybody has a question on a policy, that's why the committee is there.
Yep.
That's the end of my comment.
Is there anyone else that wants to talk on these policies? Okay, thank you. Do you have any?
Nope.
That's the end of your report?
That's the end of the report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart.
I had said 17th at 6 o'clock, that's the other end.
Okay, for your next meeting?
Yep.
Gotcha. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two action items on the agenda this evening and three discussion information items. The first action item was the approval of the easement request. No action was taken at the meeting. It will be agendized in the future as a stormwater retention agreement. The second action item is the approval of the 2021-2022 preliminary budget tax levy. The committee was presented a preliminary budget for publication totaling $202,39,171 in revenue and $203,640,131 in expenditures. Included in the motion is a preliminary tax levy of $89,986,352. The budget adoption format is on page three and the tax levy summary on page four of the budget booklet, which is in board docs for your review. The approval of the, do you have a question, Bill?
No, I'm sorry. I was looking for something.
Okay, I'm sorry. With the approval of the board tonight, the preliminary budget will be presented to the public at the budget hearing on September 15, 2021 at 6:30 p.m. prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. The final 2021-2022 budget and tax levy will be approved in October. The committee approved the 2021-2022 preliminary budget and tax levy for publication and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Standing by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? A lot of work has gone into this. There still are, in the very beginning part, there's a number of assumptions that have been clearly outlined. And some of them can really swing, can make the numbers swing fairly large. And so as we do every year, we try and do our best to get ready for our public hearing, which will be in next month. Just from a per-mill perspective, were we at $8.02 last year? And I think we're looking at $8.03 projected. Oh, the other way around, okay. So it's basically roughly the same that we're looking at. But again, that can change. You know, one assumption, equalized property value, we're estimating at 2%. If it comes in at 4%, which it did a year ago, we'll see the levy go down. So, you know, there's many moving components to this, some of the big, I mean, there's some really big moving parts to this. But we will see where that goes and we have a process that's been put in place for FNF to follow and follow up and get all the details ready for October. So any other discussion, comments? Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kelly Piaszek.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first discussion information item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures are within budgeted limits for both General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating in accordance with all approved budget and all other funds as well. Any questions on the monthly budget report?
We're pretty early on in the year, so.
For sure. My next discussion information item is the 2020-2021 fiscal year-end update. Due to the many unknowns in a pandemic year, a projected deficit of $1.9 million was budgeted for the 2020-2021 school year. This deficit included contingencies for COVID response and would come from fund balance. Our pre-audit numbers are showing we finished the year with a surplus of $3.8 million primarily due to higher than anticipated EACH open enrollment numbers, a higher than normal amount of Medicare reimbursement, and health claims remaining at a low level. Next month, the committee will be discussing designating $4 million of this surplus into the reserve fund balance for future health claims. This will be agendized as an action item next month.
Any questions or discussion on this? Hey, Pat?
Okay, my final discussion information item is long-range planning. As we've discussed in the past, we are facing a structural deficit of $3 million per year. While the normal budgeting process starts in November, if there's going to be any significant changes in operation for the 2022-2023 school year, we will need to begin the process much earlier. Board workshops will be scheduled for September and October to discuss the causes of the structural deficit and potential solutions. So Sue will be polling the board for appropriate dates for our workshops.
Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, Pat?
All right, our next meeting is September 6 at 5:30 in the boardroom. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I think normally it would be on the 6th if we follow the Monday before the second Wednesday, but I think the 6th is Labor Day, so we're on the 13th.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
So everyone's on the same page on that.
Thank you, Darren.
Unless you want to come in? It has been done before.
You'd have been all alone, Mr. McCaffrey.
Well. Being alone and being lonely.
There you go. On the 15th.
On the 15th, yes.
Yes.
Love those.
So Finance and Facilities on September 13th. Board of Education regular meeting on Wednesday, September 15th, along with the hearing, the public hearing at 6:30 on that day.
As will HR.
And HR, yes.
And Compensation.
It's always a busy, September is always a busy, busy time for us. Did I complete your report, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Teaching and Learning, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee was, meeting was held on August 3, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Six discussion information items appear on your agenda for teaching and learning this evening. Our first discussion information item was a technology update regarding options and costs to relocate our board meeting space. At the July 6 Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, a board member requested that the administration look into an alternate site for board meetings. Steve Schloman, our district's Chief Information Officer for Technology, provided options and estimated costs for mobile broadcast option as well as costs for relocating the broadcast equipment to another location. Summer information was included in your Friday packet.
Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, Greg?
Our second discussion information item was an elementary social studies resource update. Dee Garcia, Director of Multilingual and Global Education, and Melissa Yao, our Director of Elementary Learning, along with teachers Molly Winters from Lowell and Carrie Steen from Hawthorne, shared the results of the second elementary piloted instructional resource titled Impact by McGraw-Hill. The results, they reviewed the results and the outcomes of their pilot surveys and shared the plan for continued collaboration, curriculum development, and professional learning. In addition, they offered their recommendation that we consider this resource for approval at the September 2021 Teaching and Learning Committee meeting in preparation for implementation in the fall of 2022.
Any discussion or questions on this? Mr. Baumgart?
I would just comment that the procedures they've gone through to work on that were very, very encouraging, that they, you know, they were really following it through and making comparisons with other possibilities. And so far, they're very solid.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Zenobia?
Not being on the Teaching and Learning Committee, how does the board get those books? Are there extra copies? We, I know that you got them at the committee.
You'll have them.
Well, I'll get them.
Mr. Zenobia, does everybody else want copies too? Yeah, so the committee members did, but you're asking for non-committee members.
Yes, please.
Yep.
Good.
Mr. Dietz?
Our third discussion information item was a secondary social studies update. Rachel Herman, our Director of Secondary Learning, was joined by Butler teacher Jessica Nader and Honing teacher Jody Jackson to present the summer work of the middle school social studies team as they worked to complete Phase One of the curricular design process. The team conducted a data analysis, looking at the school district of Waukesha's eighth grade forward exam data, evaluated their current scope and sequence, and then examined and unpacked the standards and proficiencies for social studies at the middle school level. The team also vetted a variety of curricular resources to support student learning as they are planning to pilot these resources in the fall of 2021.
Any discussion or comments on this item? Okay, Greg?
The fourth discussion information item was the High School English update. In 2020, the Department of Public Instruction released revised standards for English Language Arts. Rachel Herman, our Director of Secondary Learning, and Dr. Nancy Ronke, District Literacy Coach, detailed the High School English summer team's work. The group began a curricular revision this summer utilizing the district's curricular design process. A visioning team was formed, including administrators and teachers, to move through Phase One of the curricular design process.
Any questions or comments on this topic? Okay, Greg?
The fifth discussion information item was a High School Social Studies Emotional Learning Character Strong update. Luke Pinion, Director of Student Services, and Maria Delmato Cucci, Assistant Principal at South High School, brought a report to the Teaching and Learning Committee about a new resource for social emotional learning, or SEL, lessons at the high school level. Specifically, they shared information about a pilot of Character Strong, an evidence-based social emotional learning program that would replace our current self-created teacher lessons. These lessons will develop student skills around building community relationships, healthy habits, resiliency, stress regulation, communication, and other essential life skills. These skills are aligned to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's social emotional learning competencies and are taught during the Students Advisory period one time a week.
Questions or discussion on this topic? Okay, Mr. Dietz?
The sixth discussion information item was a Spring MAP update. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. Amy Rebel, Data Communication Liaison, shared the results of the Spring 2021 Administration of the Measures of Academic Progress, or MAP, assessment. The test is administered to our students in grades kindergarten through eighth and is given three times each school year. Testing three times per year will be the expected practice for schools moving forward.
Questions or comments on MAP? Okay, Mr. Dietz?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 7, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our Government Relations Committee, there is no report from that committee at this time. So we'll move on to our other business. Recommendations for future topics on our whole board meetings or at the committee level? Any suggestions?
Cooler room.
A cooler room? Yeah, you know, I don't, I haven't had power at my house for over 24 hours and I was hoping to come here and get really cold, but that didn't, with the air conditioning, but. Mr. Zenobia?
Yes, for other business, our future business would be, in light of some of the things that were talked about tonight in red, I think that we should look at how parents are notified of these things. I think a lot of this is probably something. Or timeframe.
Can you speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
Sure, sorry about that.
Hopefully, we will correct this issue with our new technology, so.
As far as the sensitive topics and things that were read tonight to us, which are very uncomfortable and are available to our children, I think it's very important that we look at ways to, lack a better word, police that better. I think in the short term, some of these things can be addressed with the help of administration, so. Us that and begin that process right away.
Sure. I can work with Dr. Seibert on that and try and figure out where we'll.
Yeah, I support that.
Agendaize that, how we'll accomplish that.
I support that.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? Yes, Dr. Piaszek, that's fine.
Thank you. Maybe just a follow-up also on the TNL discussion points. We were presented with a lot of data last week and a lot of that data makes me curious. For example, when we've got competency levels around 30, 40% in different subject areas, but we have a graduation rate of 90%. And I'm curious with the KPI sheets that we talked about, if we will be having further discussion about that and setting targets for that before this, before the school year starts, or at what point might we start to see some of those metrics in action?
Sure. Jody?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about that, Dr. Piaszek. So we're talking about doing a workshop with the whole board. We've made some tweaks since the workshop that we had previously. And as a cabinet, we've been working on them, so we want to bring them back. We were going to bring them through Teaching and Learning, but in talking with Mr. Como and Ms. Roddy and Mr. McCaffrey via my evaluation process, the thought was we'd bring them to a workshop for the whole board in probably later September. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. Couple of things here. This would be directed to FNF. Can we explore or research options for air purifiers in our classrooms?
Yeah, that's actually agendized for the September meeting, so we're going to be discussing what that looks like and what opportunities we have for air purification within our schools.
We actually have been doing a significant analysis of R-Square footage on that, so stay tuned for the September meeting for FNF.
Thank you. And then the second, this is not a committee, it's, but I would recommend, I would ask for recommendations to have the Operations Committee to convene prior to school starting, just to take a review of what, where our community is. Lord willing, things won't be as high and spiked as they are now, we could take a look at it, but I think it would be prudent to take a look at where we are as a community based off of our current decision and our current policy regarding mitigation steps. As we go into the school year, parents are going to run into things like multiple exposures in a classroom, or somebody brought up the Too Sick for School policy that we have. Let's just take a look at what those are versus what we currently have for our mitigation steps or not. Just, last year, we just kept getting a lot from our parents saying, "We're doing this on the fly, we're doing this on the fly." We have a few weeks before school starts. Let's just have that committee review those things and have some plans, tentative plans in place on how we're going to address issues based off of our current policy. A lot of thoughts, sorry.
And that's an administration committee, so.
Correct.
Just so people are aware.
I can share Ms. Roddy's comments with Dr. Cook and he and I will work together on that.
Okay. All right, any other business set? We'd like to have agendized for future meetings. Okay, seeing none, we do not have a need for closed session this evening, so thank you, everybody, for being with us this evening. Have a good night, be safe.
Good, thank you.